It is now four thirty and we will call the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Work Session Tuesday, July seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen in the main conference room of the county administration building, one Center Street, Chatham, Virginia, to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barber.
Here.
Mr. Blackstock.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here.
Are there items to be added to the agenda? Seeing none, can I get an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Dr. Miller made the motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Blackstock. Any discussion on the motion? Dr. Miller, can you press the green button?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you second it? Motion been made and seconded. Waiting for Mr. Davis.
Don't keep waiting because it's not here on this little, nice little module.
Maybe they're gonna miss that.
It says live, though. You sure shake it. You got me nervous. I really got me nervous. There we go.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Best I can do. I think the vote is unanimous. Well, the citizens' convenience, all work session and committee meetings are now being recorded and can be viewed on the same YouTube location as the Board of Supervisors Business Meeting. Please remember that the Board's work session is designed for internal board and county staff communication, discussion, and work. It is not a question and answer session with the audience. Accordingly, during the work session, no questions or comments from the audience will be entertained, respectively. Any outbursts or disorderly conduct from the audience will not be tolerated and may result in the offending person's removal from the work session. As a reminder, all county citizens and other appropriate parties as designated by the Board's bylaws are permitted to make comments under the hearing of the citizen's session of tonight's business meeting. We down the presentations to him?
No.
Okay. We're down to staff and committee and constitutional officers of court.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. I'm sure all of you know that I'm the CSA coordinator for the county. I'm just gonna update you guys as I do kind of quarterly now with how everything's been progressing throughout the year. So the first slide that I have is showing our supplemental allocations for the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen and the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. What our supplemental allocation is, is the extra money that we've asked the state for, which every locality does that over year because they give you a general allocation for the year and then anything over that, you have to ask for extra. So you can see that in two thousand and seventeen, we asked for a total, state and local shared a five point nine million. This year, we asked for three point nine million. So that is a difference of one point nine million dollars that we decreased by in our supplemental allocation for this year compared to last year. So I break that down so you can see the local portion of that, the state portion of that, and then the total. The next slide shows how many cases we've opened and closed throughout this year, so far from July two thousand and seventeen through June of this year. So really, we've probably evened out in opening and closing about the same amount of cases. Some months are heavier than others, like in October of two thousand and seventeen. I think we had nine foster care children taken into care in one month. And that's not the norm, but that's why that number's so high there. And then, you know, as you can see, as we progress, we close more and more cases and that's when we begin to change our policies and add those new policies that we put into effect back in September to decrease the amount of time that children could get services. The next shows our pool reports for the year. The red is the two thousand and sixteen, and then we go into the yellow, which is two thousand and seventeen, and then through June of this year and two thousand and eighteen. It's a little bit complicated, but I think if you look at, the yellow starts to decrease and then the blue decreases even more. I mean, it goes up and down and that's kind of very, a pool report is basically what bill we have paid for that month. It doesn't mean that they specifically were, the time was used in that month. It means that we just paid those invoices out during that month. So it could be a February invoice that we're paying on a May pool report because the invoice just got turned into us for payment. So it's not specifically saying that that was, the child was getting services during that month. But it shows what we've paid out so far for the year. These are-
Do you monitor how many, I mean, is it a criteria for, from the time that you get a bill that it shouldn't be paid or?
In our policy, it says that a vendor has forty-five days to get the bill to the case manager. The case manager then takes the bill and they should receive documentation with the invoice to show that the child received the services, that they were there on the date of the state. And we want to make sure that we're paying for the services that we're asking for, that we're not paying for something that a child is not receiving. So we implemented some processes there to ensure that we didn't have that happen. So the case manager looks over the invoice, signs off on it, and then each agency does a report for the month and sends all of the invoices and documentation to our office and then they're processed by our office manager and then paid. Then they're sent to finance for the checks to be cut. So there's multiple, you know, checks along the way to make sure that we're paying what we should be.
Is, but I guess following up on Mr. Warren's question, if then there's forty-five days, but when case manager or case worker receives the invoice, do we stamp it and say, okay, we're gonna get this back, we're gonna get this paid in thirty days or forty-five days?
There's not anything in our policy that says that the case manager has a certain amount of time. Most case managers, most agencies, their policy is that they stamp it when they receive it from the vendor, you know, and then they process and it comes on to us now. It does happen where invoices fall between the cracks and I do, like, right around this time of the year, because we have till September thirtieth to pay any invoices that went through June of two thousand and eighteen. So I'll send out an email to the vendors and say, if you have any outstanding invoices that you have not, that have not been processed for payment, please send them to me and then I make sure that they get out to the case manager. Because I don't want vendors to not be paid for something that they have, you know, they've sent out and that they haven't got a response from. So I try to ensure that everything's taken care of before the end of the year.
What happens to them after September?
That September thirtieth date is passed, we cannot process the payment. The only way that we could would be actually if you all approved for us to use a hundred percent of county funds to pay something, which I don't plan on doing.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Sorry to interrupt.
No, it's okay. So the next chart is our FY seventeen compared to our FY eighteen total expenditures, which this is still ever-changing, but I feel like the beginning of the year won't change much. So you can look and compare what we spent in, like, July two thousand and seventeen and what we spent in July two thousand and seventeen. Now, when we get down to, like, April, May, like, June, we don't even have one yet because these invoices have not been sent to us. We usually have about a two-month turnaround on invoices by the time the vendors get them out, the case manager's processed, they get to our office, they get processed, and the check gets there.
It jumps out at me so I can ask you. What in the world?
For June.
June seventeenth, is that because the end of fiscal year causes that or?
What happens is we can pay June, through June of two thousand and seventeen, like, we can pay July, August, and September, up to September thirtieth, we can pay June invoices and back. So, but they're not, they separate, when we send them to the state, they separate it out and it always looks like a June, basically.
Okay.
Am I explaining that right, kind of? I mean, and so it always gets pulled onto that.
Well, it's current year with July eighteen, hypothetically, July eighteen, August eighteen, September eighteen, but there's also September.
Right.
That is bill prior but paid in those three months that are thrown back into June.
Correct.
Okay.
Because you'll have a June one, they number them, and sometimes we can have as many as four drawdowns from the state, and they'll be June one, two, three, and four. But they may have February invoices or March invoices or May, but they're gonna consider them June.
Sure.
Because that's the last period they have open, and that period is open through the year.
Well, I mean, that just jumps off the chart.
And that's why. Yeah, that's why. I feel like every year, that bar is gonna always be higher than the rest just due to that, you know, that there. But I'm hoping, like, when we, when we, my plan is to come back in September, probably be October, meaning once I have the final numbers for the entire fiscal year and give a final report that will show exactly, you know, total of what we've done, where this is still gonna be changing some at this point. I wanted to update you guys on the recommendations that we got from Ledford and Cohen, I believe it was last month. When we met, they gave recommendations from the consultation that they did with our office. One of their recommendations was that we create a long-term strategic plan with CPMT. I had reached out to Ledford and Cohen. They are going to work with me and the CPMT on helping us create a long-term strategic plan to not only encompass CPMT but to also reach across agencies and try to have more collaboration and communication between different agencies to really help the county in general, cost-wise and many other avenues as well. Second, they recommended that we have someone, have more insight from someone on this side, be a part of the CPMT. So we appointed Mr. Hicks as a member of CPMT, and as of July one, he will actually be our chairman, which I know he's super excited about.
I'm sure he's too, that.
So he'll start that job July one. The next was a request for the forgiveness of the remaining one point five million dollars repayment that we had with the state. Letters had been sent from the CPMT to the SEC. That request was not granted. We haven't received a letter back, but we did send one from our CPMT chair with the approval of CPMT. But I believe that there, you know, there may be some discussion about other avenues for that going forward, but as of right now, we have attempted to get that forgiven. Lastly, they requested that we create an outcome measurement system. So we're currently working on that. We're planning on having more data, hopefully in the future, for you guys as well as for CPMT to kind of show what's going on with these kids, how many success stories we have, how well our services are working, different things like that. So we're trying to come up with a plan right now of how we're gonna implement all of those into what we're already doing. And then, lastly, we had our audit on May thirtieth. They were only here for one day this year, which is every year, they've been shortened the amount of time that they're here. I actually got the final audit report back earlier this week, but I had already permitted it then. At that point, we only had the draft, but nothing changed. The conclusion from the audit this year was that we had no significant observations. We had no non-compliance or internal control weaknesses at this time. All three quality improvement plans from last year had been successfully completed, and I included a copy of the report in with the power company as well. So this is the first year that we haven't had any quality improvement plans. Usually, they had something for us to improve on if they were to check up on us for next year, but this is the first year we haven't even had any of those. The only thing we had was a couple of purple things that the auditor and I spoke about that, you know, we could, really weren't even mandatory, but that we could have been upon. So I think that's really, that's something that we don't even have any written, anything written at all.
Any questions for Mr. Warren? Thank you. Good job. Okay. Ms. Vanderheide, twenty eighteen outstanding encumbrances.
That's the, that's the report that you all will receive every year and you have in the last few years. These are basically carryover encumbrances, which are items that were purchased before year end but we did not receive before year end. So that purchase order has to roll over and as well, the money for that from the previous year needs to roll over as well. And so our budget resolution allows the provision for that to automatically roll over, but it states that you all will receive a report as to what they are. So a attached report, there are a total of ten purchase orders that had to roll over. We do make every attempt possible to make those purchases and receive the goods in or services to pay for those, but sometimes it's just impossible. So a total of one million, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, two seventeen seventy-one will roll over as far as purchase orders and the funds to cover that. And so that won't require a vote of the board or anything like that, but it's just for your information. Do you have any-
Any questions about that?
Just, I think, Barbara, just to make it clear, the money was allocated with previous year's budget. We paid a bill and the current year, any money rolls out of Astor's question?
Correct. That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Any other questions? Now, we're gonna move to six C, health insurance cost increase. Ms. Vanderheide.
As we do every year, we bring you all our insurance renewal. This has already been presented to the school board. As you may or may not be aware of, our insurance covers not only the us but the school board, town of Gretna, the service authority, and social services. And we have an insurance committee that meets every year, and we determine what is the best option benefit-wise and cost-wise for both our employees as well as the citizens that have to help fund our insurance increases. And so the last few years, we found it very beneficial to put out bids for our insurance because we do want to make sure that we are getting the best coverage for our money. So bids were solicited again this year. We do use a company that helps us with that process so that they're the experts in that and we're not. And they try to make sure that what we are getting is apples-to-apples comparisons. So we received, I think, basically one proposal, and it was from Edna, and they did, it seemed to be cheaper coverage, but in looking at everything, it was not as good. The coverage didn't cover the same or that same thing. So once they put those things in, their cost was actually higher than what we already had. So we went back to Anthem and we asked them if they could do any better. If you'll remember, last year, our increase was proposed at two percent, and because we sent out the bid and they came in pretty good, they said, okay, we won't have an increase this year. Well, we knew that this year we would probably have one, and our increase is twelve point one percent this year. We haven't had an increase since two years ago when it was just shy fifteen percent. So it's a little bit less than two years ago, but then you have to wonder, okay, so what are we gonna do as far as? We did change some things around to get it to the twelve point one percent. We still do currently have three plans that we offer our employees. We have a Key Care five hundred plan, which is a five hundred dollar deductible, a Key Care thirty plan, which is a thousand dollar deductible with a thirty dollar copay, and our high deductible plan, which is the LUMA, which is also coupled with an HSA. You all have voted and it will continue moving forward that each person that moves to that high deductible plan and those that are already enrolled in the high deductible plan, you all contribute five hundred dollars to that savings account so that people do have money when they start to use that plan. That does come with a three thousand dollar deductible. So with that being said, each year, we do budget a hundred thousand dollars for any anticipated increases. So that money was already there, but a hundred thousand dollars will not cover this increase. So I looked at several different options for you all to consider tonight. One of them was, well, what if you all paid the entire increase and our employees just continued to pay the same thing? That's option number one that was in your packet. It would result in an additional need of two hundred thousand dollars. So the total cost would be three hundred thousand dollars. But I wanted to let you all know that in doing that, it depends on what type of plans the people have selected. So the most that that contribution could go to would be ten thousand dollars annually if somebody chose the family plan. So right now, your contribution is between sixty-six hundred dollars and just over seven thousand. So we only have one person right now that has the family plan, and this is based on our current enrollment. This does include us as well as social services. So we have a total of three hundred and ten subscribers. So if you were to do that, and you want people to come on to those other plans, but it would be at a much greater cost. So what I've shown you here is basically subscriber-only. That sixty-six to seven thousand would go to just shy of seventy-five hundred to eight thousand dollars. So then, my second option that I would like for you all to entertain is basically how we looked at it last time. The fifteen percent, we had a lot of employees that came and they said, you know, this is really hard on us because at that time, you all were only contributing to the subscriber-only cost. So therefore, somebody had employee child or employee spouse, they were taking a huge grunt. I mean, it was way greater than fifteen percent. Because when we say it's an overall increase of fifteen percent, that's over all the plans. But if you're only gonna contribute toward one plan, of course, the other people that have to pick up the difference to the employee spouse, employee child, and family coverage would be much, much higher for them. So I use the same kind of mentality. I said, if we just make people pay twelve point one percent more than they paid last year, let's look at those costs. So that's option number two, which I have determined would cost, based on our current enrollment, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars more than the current hundred thousand that we have. So it would be two sixty. But again, I'm just telling you, it's based on what we have right now, which I don't think a lot of fluctuation will happen between the different plans with the paying-it-all scenario. You're gonna have people migrating to these higher-cost plans, and it will more than likely be greater than two hundred. But I really had nothing to base that off of. So your contribution for the second option would go from sixty-six forty-seven to seven thousand, four seventy-eight on the low end, and from seven thousand dollars to seventy-nine sixty-six for the top end of the plan. And that's actually for employee-only coverage for your five hundred dollar deductible.
And all these numbers on page one-ten, one-eleven of your work session tonight?
And I know it's overwhelming because it's a lot of numbers and a lot of figures, and we are bringing this to you all to decide what you all would like to do because our documents to go out to our employees have to go out prior to you all making a decision in August. It would just push up too far because we have to start deducting from paychecks in September. So that's why we had opted to bring it to you all tonight. So our recommendation as staff would be to go with the second option, which would be an additional hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And we would bring a amendment to our budget back to your office meeting to adjust for that because, like I said, that would be throughout the year. So we would be fine starting the year out. Do you have any questions? I know it's a lot of information.
Can you say an additional hundred and sixty? That's a hundred and sixty, but it's actually two hundred and sixty.
Two sixty. Yes, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And that is a recurring cost that will impact for future budgets, just so you know. And I did look at several different scenarios to see, you know, how is that gonna affect our employees? And we've never really done that before. You know, they, a lot of them just got an increase in their pay in July. So is that gonna take all of their increase away? If people have a subscriber-only, the answer to that is no. Yes, they will have to pay more, it will come out of their increase, but it will not cost their increase. There will be people that will have to pay more than their increase is. You know, somebody, the person that's on our family plan will have to, will end up paying an additional seven hundred dollars next year over their increase. So yes, it's gonna cost them more. Also, I looked at somebody that had, most of them have the richer plan. And so they do have the option to reevaluate and go to one that has a higher deductible or that kind of thing. So they are paying that premium to have the richer insurance. So you have to bear that in mind, too. But anywhere from five hundred to seven hundred dollars more than the increase that they got. But that's given far between most of our subscribers or just subscriber-only?
Are we having any education meetings with the employees to explain to them how deductibles are coming in and, you know, help them look at their individual situations to see which one is most advantageous for them?
The last two years, we have had informational meetings for the employees to come see. We started those when we implemented the high deductible plan. I think a lot of people are misinformed about a high deductible plan. I have the high deductible plan. Kaylin has the high. We can give testimony about how much better that insurance is than having this other plan. Because when you have other plans, people tend to just go to the emergency room for headaches or stomach headaches or whatever. You take your insurance into your own hands when it's high deductible and you get the best coverage or the best, you try to get the best, most for your money. When somebody else is paying for it, you just go wherever it's convenient. It's just a way of thinking. But yes, we do our best to inform our employees. We cannot make it mandatory that for them to come. So they're not always well-intended, but we do our best to get that information out.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Vanderheide, you may or may not know, but during the negotiation, are there any wellness options-
Yes.
-that we could start implementing here to lower the burden?
Yes, we absolutely have talked to, there was a team from Anthem that came, and they gave us many different avenues that we could go to. In fact, several years ago, we had, if people came in and they did wellness clinic and they weighed, they had their weight and different things, all of that stuff. If they did that, we gave them gift cards. Because if you can identify somebody that has high blood pressure or something before a heart attack or stroke happens, then you've really paid for that card. So we did that several years ago, but our team, the insurance committee, is really looking seriously at doing something to help our employees become-
Where our employee, we can, you have a choice as a employee to pay higher or lower insurance cost based on if you participate or not in the wellness. So it's not mandatory, you got the option, but it is a significant cost savings for the ones who do the wellness program.
Does the plan carry the new caviar that's out there with the nurse practitioner that's available twenty-four, seven-
You've actually used-
For call-in? Because that changes from going to the doctor box. Any other questions? I'm answering Ms. Vanderheide.
Well, since you're in charge of that, we'll find the additional hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Well, I'm hoping that we will have money that is remaining because last year, we didn't use our health insurance amount that we had budgeted. So you're really not looking at a whole lot of difference between what was there- So you're really not looking at a whole lot of difference between what was there last year and what we, you're only talking $60,000 more, which I think I would have it in benefits. I have kind of a pot that's full of salary increases and that kind of thing. But if we had turnover, then we may not have used all the money in that pot because we had the money remaining in the budget from vacancy savings to not have to draw on that cost. So that's where I'm anticipating some...
You're going to carry all...
From, I'm, yeah.
Agency savings.
Agency savings.
And that sounds good right now. But I just want to remind everybody, as I'm sure Mr. Blackstock is probably getting ready to do, this is an ongoing expense. So this 160 she can find now doesn't mean it's going to be there next year. So we just need to be conscious of that. And I'm sure she will remind us.
And I even put that in.
I can also say, a lot of the retention problem we have, what I'm hearing Luke saying, it's not so much salary, it's insurance. All of these other localities offer family plans that we can't even touch. And I think that's why we're losing the employees. We're losing is not because of the salary, it's the insurance, what they're going to need.
Exactly.
I mean, we need to look at it long-term if we're going to keep employees.
Right. And so these last two increases that we've had, if you all choose to go with the option that I provided for you all, it is moving those ever so slightly a little bit. We pay a little more toward those extra coverages. Nothing like the state can pay. You know, so many people say, we just have the state insurance. The state insurance is exactly what we have. It's Anthem, Blue Cross, Blue Shield. It's pretty much the same coverage. The reason people like it so much is because the state pays so much towards those plans that we can't afford to do. Like I said, if we picked up this whole increase and you had five people go to the family plan, you're talking, that's $50,000 just for five people to move to a family plan. And it would be wonderful if we could do that. But I think you all have made great strides in moving us toward that direction, but it's just a little bit...
Any other questions on this? Thank you, Ms. Vanderheide. We're down to six D backup EMS transport update. Mr. Sid.
Good evening. We received two bids for the backup service. One from DRT, which is definitely costing, which is a group we're using now to do the short-term in HRT, you know, and it's from A and R, American Medical Response. DRT was cheaper, and we have chosen right now what we're negotiating with them. They are very much more flexible to do some things, and they're helping me to identify where I can attack some costs to get the overhaul cost down. So that's where we're at right now with the permanent solution. For the short-term, we need to renew the 30-day contract with DRT for HRT and renew our stipend about we're using layers and cool brands to use the other two backup trucks. And we're using one here, ten of them are layers. Those two trucks, a lot of them, cool brands run over 100 calls, just on the backup truck in June, and I believe layers ran well, were in calls. And we actually had a few times where we've had both of them come to a call because we didn't have, I had that situation last night. So that's worked out well for us right now. There is an amendment, one thing that does need to be amended in the action. I'm sorry, when I was working with Vaden, I gave Vaden the cost, but I didn't, I totally didn't give him the accurate cost. The monthly cost for DRT is $38,000. That's my chance, that's the same as it has been June, July. The $8,800 is what we're going to per week for stacking the volunteers. So it's definitely back to $73,200, that's what they should be. So I apologize for that. So, but we'll have a permanent solution very soon.
And we'll make some notes of that when we make the motion across the street.
Yeah, we'll just pull that off the consent agenda and just go it on separately and fix that number. Any questions, Ms. Blackstock?
I represent the HRT area. I've not received one complaint about the services. So I'm happy with that. There's a lot of concern in the community, especially the town of Hurford, a lot of elderly citizens.
Yes, sir.
They were concerned, but I've not received any complaints at all.
And I've been in a discussion with their mayor, keeping him on the loop for what we're doing here. And I want to say one thing about DRT, it's been great. We've had two mechanical issues with trucks, and they were on the phone yesterday, and we had a good communication that we didn't have before. So that's been great. And I've heard the staff, they'll talk with me during the day, too, to help me out.
I've been on the phone with my mother, and she's on her phone, and I work over in HRT, and she's happy.
As long as Bubba's happy, you're good.
Any other questions, Ms. Blackstock?
Do you think we'll have that by the next meeting?
Thanks, Monica. That's what I want to get, yes, sir. The sooner we get a backup, the less my phone will ring at 12 o'clock at night saying we need a pair of medics to come help us. I'd be happy about that.
Kim, why don't you jump in and say, this $73,000 tonight?
It's already budgeted.
It's already budgeted.
We have money budgeted for regional one for backup. You all will make, have to make a budget adjustment when we do get these awards in, but for right now, with their money budgeted, one more.
Any other questions? We're down to solid waste update.
All right, we couldn't help but meet with that time of that solid waste, of course. I'm going to, we're going to talk about the ordinance, but just to kick things off, I want to let you know that the various solid waste committees are steadily meeting just the last few days. The operations committee is met, the enforcement committee is met, and the administration is met. This form that I handed out before the meeting entitled "Appetite for Uninhabitable Dwelling Exemption Solid Waste Disposal Liability Fee," this has come out of the administration committee, and I want you all to see this. This is a form that if someone has assessed a solid waste fee and they want to be exempted based on the fact that the house is not habitable or uninhabitable, this is the form that they would fill out. There are places on there to check, that electrical system doesn't work, it's not structurally sound, that type of thing. This form will go to our building inspectors, and our building inspectors will go out and visit the site to make that final determination, which will be reflected to the question renewed. There is a $20 non-refundable fee for that site inspection, so we get that on the fee as well. The front is the form, the back is some basic information about what we consider makes a dwelling uninhabitable. And if it involves, please note that a livable dwelling that is currently vacant is not eligible for the fee exemption because it could be occupied at any time. So if you recall, our past rule was you could get exempted if it was just vacant, and we didn't know what the next day could be rented or occupied. So I just want to let you know vacant is not added anymore, it's based on whether dwelling is habitable or not. So we anticipate, this form, there'll be a final last minute review, but we anticipate this going online very soon so that people can start the process of calling in if they have an uninhabitable structure. Any questions on that form?
Just a quick one. Let's say in a trailer park, they don't have units, a truck, actual mobile home set up, but they have a hookup line, they have to pay.
We had a determination on that, Shirley here, that we...
No, I'm only assessing them for occupied lots.
So when you say occupied, you mean...
As of January 1st.
Where habitable mobile homes should be on the site.
Yes.
And it's effective January 1st.
I've been sent on the report that they sent to my office, January 1st, listing lots that had an mobile home in it and who owns the mobile home.
And Shirley, correct me if I'm wrong, for people in mobile home situations, park situations, it's going to be far cheaper for them to have private service dump their trash, to be assessed for every lot typically. And aren't you in the process of getting a letter out to them, or have gotten a...
We've gotten the letters out, and we're starting to get them back. If they have private collections, then we'll be able to do that too.
Yeah, I'll receive the calls.
All right, and from there, we'll go into...
Wait a minute, yeah. Don't run off. This one really doesn't matter, but it's a curious question. The $20 non-refundable fee, is that going to flow into the enterprise fund or the general fund?
The general fund.
Yeah, because it's the inspector, we're paying for the inspector.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because enterprise fund is kind of restricted.
It is.
Not a much, much money for it.
It is.
I want to put it in there.
What if somebody has a house on a property that, let's say they're elderly, parents live there, and they're deceased, can they make it unattractive? If they took the disconnected plumbing? Because I had this question asked, actually, you know, something sitting there, just a lot of using with storage, a old one.
One of the easier things would probably be to disconnect the electric meter.
Okay.
That way, it would be considered uninhabitable, where they would have to come and get a permit to reconnect the back, so you'd be able to track it that way.
So as long as it is uninhabitable, will they make it or it is now? Okay.
Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sides, this is a fresh start, correct? I mean, so everybody that's got no grandfathered opportunities from real estate coming in, everybody starts off from ground zero again.
Right, it is correct.
Okay. Other questions, Ms. Sides, on this one?
This one, is there other ways besides disconnecting electricity? And I'll give you an example, if you, you own a house, and you don't want to put anybody in it, but you've got pipes and all in it that you don't want to freeze and bust, what, is there any other way that they can make that house uninhabitable?
Well, that's, that's where we run into a kind of breakpoint that, you know, if the house is sitting there with all conditions ready to go, then it's really just a vacant house. It's not an uninhabitable.
But then, okay, sewage or the plumbing?
Well, if, I mean, if somebody...
You have to convince that inspector, I was going to say.
Yeah, exactly.
Has he got some, he's got some legal?
He does. There's, you know, the, the, no heating system, no functional water sewer system, that's based on the building too. You know, so if he goes out there and says, well, it doesn't have a functional water sewer system, and that wouldn't be as simple as just flipping a switch and turning the pump off, you know, because that would be too easy to come right back. But if you can convince that building inspector, yeah, that it's not a functional water and sewer system, that's not going to work that much.
Why can't it work?
Yeah, if it won't work.
Any other questions on that? Okay, Mr. Sides, keep going.
All right, and the next topic is the ordinance itself and the various committees that met on updating solid waste ordinance. I think I'll let Mr. Hunt get into just a few matter changes that we've got developed at this point.
Sure. This document's in front of you, it's got a pink, purple, and blue pretty tabs on it. There's some changes that we're going to bring before the board next month in the formal republic hearing. Just we want to get everything changed in one shot. And these tabs, I'm just going to hit the highlights that are significant changes. This will be a public hearing, an August meeting, the changes. All the committees have been working on this, and these are just minor tweaks that are necessary due to the work that the solid waste committees have been doing. This blue change, you can see a blue tab. All we've done is we've added a definition of uninhabitable dwelling to our ordinance that didn't exist beforehand, and all that does is it mirrors the language that's on this form. We just dumped it in here. And as you can see, it has all the boxes just put in a narrative form on there. So we just added definition on the blue tab for uninhabitable dwelling that did not exist beforehand. That's our proposal. Now for the pink tab, if you go to the pink tab, Ms. Vanderheide is going to educate you about the changes here. These changes relate to when the solid waste disposal fee is going to be billed and when interest and pillars will approve for failure to pay. So, Ms. Vanderheide, what was yours?
Yesterday, we actually met as the administration committee, and it does consist of the commissioner and the treasurer. So anytime they want to jump in to interject in what I have to say, they're more than welcome to. But we wanted to make sure that this billing is not confusing for our citizens, that we try our best to give them the benefit of the doubt. And I know that you all really wanted to make sure that this fee is collected twice a year, regardless of how we figure out how to make that work. What we have determined is going to be the least amount of work as far as computer software changes and that kind of thing. It seems that the best route for us to go is the language that's in the ordinance and the change that's made here. So for this year, since it's the very first year, we will bill the first payment in December with no penalty ever. They will never be penalized. So they can pay that however they want to. But in order to get everything on a schedule that's with the rest of our taxes, we will have to do another installment in June of $60, which is basically for your 20-year. But that way, it mirrors what we do for real estate, it mirrors what we do for personal property. So they will get a bill again in June for $60, and then again in December. I know we threw it out there of always billing it in December, but we found out that as far as keeping up with it, it would almost be a nightmare because where we're, we were allowing them to pay till June. So we're only billing it once, and the fear was that, you know, citizens may lose the coupon that has to be turned back in. There was no way for the treasurer's office to send a delinquent bill like when they sent all the other delinquents in February. So people, we felt, would be very confused by that. So we wanted to alleviate as much confusion as possible. If, you will remember, this is how we implemented it back in 2013. We billed one full year in December, and then we went to a twice-a-year billing the following year, which that first D would be June 20th. But the first year is the only year that we're not going to penalize people for paying. And then regular penalties and interest would apply going forward.
So, for fact, December of 2018, we did bill for how much?
For $120 for this year.
But they can pay it any way they want to.
Correct.
For six months, $20 a month?
Correct.
Okay, I got it.
And even if it oozed over into July or all, you know, they wanted to take a whole year to pay it, they're never going to be penalized on that first hundred and twenty.
So they could pay, so they could pay, they could say, I'm going to pay $10 a month because that works best for me.
Exactly.
Get to June and go to $20 a month for six months, and then go back to 10.
Could do that, if they wanted to do that.
Okay, Mr. Blackstock, I'm sorry.
You have a question I want.
Okay.
I guess the other question I would have would be that, Mr. Short, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, sir.
Watching him shake his head over that when I'm asking questions.
Oh, I was going to ask Mr. Short.
But we definitely want to make sure that you all are okay with it because we still need to give direction to our software vendor. And we don't want anybody to be confused about what plan we're going to go with.
Seems pretty accommodating for our citizens. Seems very, very accommodating for our citizens. Any other questions for Ms. Vanderheide at all? Ms. Sides, we move to the next.
The only other change that I want to highlight that will be brought forward at public hearing in August is this pretty purple tab. What we determined is we've expanded the exemption for private waste collection. Previously, you only were exempted for paying solid waste fee if you had a private waste hauler who deposited the waste in a non-county landfill. Now, we said, that doesn't really make sense if you've paid somebody to haul your trash and they bring it to our landfill and are already paying a tipping fee, shouldn't that be exempted too? So all we did is add language that broadened it to allow you to be exempted if you have a private waste hauler that takes it to a non-county landfill or to our county landfill because they're already paying a tipping fee. So that's the, we just expanded that exemption. So those are the three changes of significance that we brought to you in August. So we just wanted to give you a heads up in case you have any questions.
Mr. Skins?
Just have one question, Mr. Short. Do any of the committee members know what the charges are to have home picked up for any of these outside kinds? I don't think they'd ask that question.
Scott, if you live in South, what is, what do you pay?
$120 a year.
For the convenience of curbside pickup?
Right.
So I pay double.
We beg you. Like a, like a former member said, I'm paying Chadham to pick my garbage up, and I'm paying the county to put it back down.
Any other questions?
Well, we are, the reason for this is a private hauler that picks up the town of Hurford, the town of Chadham, and one of them might get, they could pass that savings on to the town.
If they wish.
One last thing I'll mention, Mr. Chairman, in addition to those changes that we discussed, the only outstanding section that's yet to be addressed is enforcement. The enforcement committee is in there, they're going to be some more meetings with the sheriff's office, and we're tweaking that section. So in August, you'll get what you see now, plus a proposal to strengthen the enforcement section. And I'd also like to say, you know, staff here, we kind of have to be in some of these meetings, but Mr. Short and Ms. Hammack participated in our meetings and contributed a lot to the form, was largely put together by Ms. Hammack, and of course, Mr. Short helped us with the language with the billing, so we truly appreciate their input.
Well, we appreciate them all the time, they attend a lot of our work sessions and meetings, and it's very valued, and so thank you for all of your, everything you do. Any other questions about Sideways? If not, we'll move to six G, no, six L, smart scales applications. Mr. Sides, please.
Yes, briefly, this is something of an information item we talked in years past about, smart scale system that VDI has to prioritize transportation projects, so that they, they go through an assessment situation, they rate them, and they rank them, and localities are eligible to submit applications, up to four applications per locality, based on our population. We've done this in the past, what I have handed out to you before the meeting is the resolution you'll vote on tonight, but it does list the projects that we're proposing to submit. Route forty six, the Route 640 Ward Road Improvement is one that we projected in the past. Route forty in McGrath Lane in Brettina is also a project that we submitted last year and didn't quite make the cut. The US Route 29 and Route 642 Shula Drive Project is a new application for us, it's based on the meetings that we've had with VDI and with the community to project the long-term fix there to redo that intersection. And then a last project, Route 729 Kentup Road and Ringo West Industrial Park Project, came through us through our Director of Economic Development, Matt Rowe, and working with Intertate on expansion of their distribution center. There were some deficiencies in that intersection where you turn off Kentup Road in that needs some work. So, at this point, you know, we are limited in what we can submit, you know, we've had discussions about some subdivision roads that were in bad condition, they are not eligible for the smart scale system. So we've submitted, at this point, we've submitted pre-applications for those projects that are listed, that would be due in the end of July, I think. The actual application will be due August 1st, this resolution will be a part of that application. And my final caveat is that VDI does screen those projects. So when we say this is what we're submitting, I can't promise that all of the applications will go through the full screening process, and then ultimately be rated and openly included. This resolution support is the key thing tonight, I just wanted to take a few minutes in our work session if I could.
Any questions?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Sides for his work with VDI, and coming up with these projects, it's a lot of work, and I know the board as a whole appreciates your efforts in getting this done.
Unfortunately, there's a lot of work to go. We've done the pre-applications, between now and August 1st, there's a lot to be done. VDI hasn't given me all of the information yet, so it's going to be a busy couple of weeks.
Great, how do you come with these projects? How do you pick these projects? Who picks them?
Well, it's largely, well, it's a court input, but it's largely from VDI as far as what's eligible, you know, it's got to be on corridor statewide significant or within a certain distance of that. It's got to meet a need that's identified in the Dtrans project, so there's a lot of things that we might think about that VDI would say, well, that doesn't qualify. And there's some projects that you don't see on the list here, the Berry Hill Connector Road Project is being submitted to smart scale, it's not being submitted by the county, it's being submitted by the planning distribution. And they, they're already preparing that application. So the Berry Hill Connector Road will be submitted on behalf of the city and county. And then, you know, other projects, like Oak Hill Road Improvements, will be funded through other strings of money.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Sides, we're now down to six G, library expansion, Mr. T.
Start out talking to you about a report that was mailed to you, that there's some more paper copies that you need, and we thought, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Barber's...
The Barber's man.
Was kicked back?
It's also in the packet, it's in the packet.
So you know that the four existing branch libraries, where they're located in Brasville, Chatham, Mount Herman, and Brettina, and they all evolved from citizen input and interest and not according to the plan. So when January, got a call from a citizen, Martha Walker, who was relaying a question from Ms. Short here, who's in the Dan River District, asking, why don't we have a library in our district? And that initiated a conversation and discussion that resulted in the report that you see before us, which proposes a more systematic look at the county to provide adequate library support to all of our citizens. There are, as you are sure well aware, large parts of the county that are not near a library branch because of the way that the evolution of our library system evolved here. And we looked, among other things, at the readiness for school literacy statistics in the county, and they are included in the report, and you'll see, basically, that we lose ground between kindergarten and third grade. There are a number of reasons for that, but when you look at that compared with the distribution of libraries in the county, one of the things that you notice is that the schools that are, have the lowest performance are also the ones that are associated with either no nearby library, or the two library branches that have the most restricted staffing and out, particularly evenings and weekends. So that is kind of what drove this conversation. And what we have proposed here is to look at a long-range upgrade of library services to our citizens, to provide everyone with greater access to early literacy and family literacy support, to the digital literacy and support that people need to operate in society today, that we can't do with our current facilities. And what the report calls for is to consider upgrading Brasville a little bit, renovating Brettina, as we've talked about before at some point, to take full advantage of the size of that building and increase staffing and support so that it is more accessible to more people, and to build three new libraries in the county, in the Dan River District, the Bannister District, and the Staunton River District, to provide better access to our citizens. Some important caveats from the report, there's no timeline here, there's no cost estimate, there's no, sorry, no specific location, is the third point. So what we'd like to do, if you agree, is to ask you for a resolution to bring in professionals to do a feasibility study, to look at what we have found, to confirm that that would be the best overall plan for the county, and to give us some more detailed input on what it would take to implement that plan, in terms of cost, in terms of time, in terms of size, the facilities that you've been looking for.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir, Mr. Blackstock.
I would support, strongly support a feasibility plan study, but can we not go out to the foundation or some other avenues to seek grants to fund the study itself?
I think we certainly could do that. What it takes first, as I have learned working with Mount Herman, is that it needs, they need, want to see support from the county and from the board supervisors. So with that, we could certainly go seek funding.
Do you need a resolution to that effect, or what would you need from the board?
I think a resolution would be the kind of signal that would be very helpful.
Is that something that we thought would get drafted, maybe on the next agenda, and vote on it before it's presented?
As far as a resolution, I would, I know I personally would support it, but we need to, you know, because of the, it was funny, I hope somebody would come and do the study for us.
And not only, and after some areas that do not have a library, we all know that access to the internet, a lot of children do not have access to the internet at home, but hopefully our library system will provide that in the communities over time.
One of the things that we've done with the school system, who has partnered with us on this report, they're going to include a questionnaire in their back-to-school packets to parents, that will give us, I hope, some good data on what homes have internet access, and what homes have, or go to the library and use the library already.
Really, I think probably it should be some funding out, that the governor was just recently, any county, I think, was actually Mr. Ferguson's district, talking about promoting internet access all the time, is it without overnight?
No, and even, even with the broadband initiative that's ongoing, that's a key point, bringing the internet to more areas of the county, but there are still large portions of the county population, as I'm sure you are aware, even if it's available, they can't afford it. They can't afford to buy a computer, they can't afford to pay for internet access in the home, and that's where a library facility can be extremely important. And we think that these library facilities are so much more than what people think of as, it's not just a place where you go and get books, it's a community center, it expands civic engagement, it provides a lot of other benefits to literally every citizen in this community that they serve.
Can we, we write a resolution between now and across the street to get that portion in?
Well, what's your timing? Can you wait till the August meeting to work, so we can talk to the foundation, maybe get a resolution gradually, need action tonight?
What our plan was to look for a resolution for August.
Okay.
And I do have some language that another community used, so...
You get with me and Carolyn, and we'll write the resolution for August.
That would make sense, because you may want to approach, make sure that the appropriate wording is in the resolution, that may vary from the foundation or whatever we've applied.
Right, because they have missions, and we can tweak the message, the message. It's been very interesting, Mr. T, that I looked through your proposal tonight, my presentation, I should say. And some of the spots that have the worst access to broadband, there's such a correlation between those spots and the economically disadvantaged student, and the school nutrition programs which drives that poverty number down. And that's a lot of data that we certainly could use as we approach the community foundation or whatever we're going to do to try to get some funding for it, so. We just need to help those out of this corner also. Any other questions, Mr. T? Thank you. All right. Are there any other reports, Mr. Sides?
I believe, Scott, are you prepared for just a brief overview of our camera system?
We've been testing out cameras, I think we finally have one, we have one on Will Sines' property, I think you'll be very surprised at how well it does.
This is, this is the show...
I saw one little old lady yesterday, she walked up to the cans box where the...
Hope you didn't end your skates.
Candace told her she had a bag, but I thought, she don't have very many cans in the bag, but she filled that bag up, and she left with our cans.
This is the show that you can see her face, she was here today.
Did you film the dumpster overflowing?
Yeah.
Was it Saturday, Sunday, or Monday?
Yeah. Get all the photos, all the time.
Mr. Blackstock has a question.
Mr. T, I know you've got a lot of your library board members here, but you've got some new ones.
I do.
It's probably a good time to introduce them.
I would love to. Shelby Buckington and Samuel Rinkle, so this is their first exposure to library board member duty, they're getting a trial by fire. Very happy to have them.
Let's glad to have you with us tonight.
Okay, as you see on the screen here, this is the Compactor Site in Brasville, and the camera is mounted on our communications tower, and it's zoomed all the way out, just to give you an idea of how far back it is. Unfortunately, we don't have any cars at the moment, but I do have printouts, if you want to pass around, just to get an idea of what we can capture. But I'll just zoom in real quick. It's pan tilt, it's live, it's pan tilt zoom, so we have an operator watching the camera, and someone starts illegally dumping, they can zoom in and get the license number, and this is the max zoom right here, so as you see, there's handouts going around, you can see we can read license plates very well.
Every day.
And for prosecutorial purposes, you can take screenshots of someone doing something that's supposed to be...
We already have some, Joe.
Unfortunately, the CAS has a problem with the data that's coming over, because it's 1080p, I need to lower the resolution a little bit, I don't think it will hurt the picture, but 1080p going through our CAS system is just kind of...
There's one.
There's somebody...
I think they did right.
Can you put a hell of a calm up there?
Yeah, yes. I am working on putting a intercom system, so if we do something, see someone illegally dumping, like today, we were testing today, and we saw someone actually climb into the box and was throwing stuff, because it was not very high, he was down inside there, you couldn't even see, and garbage was coming out of the box onto the road, and then he loaded it back in the truck and drove off. That's very dangerous, very... Somebody might not think, throw something over there and hit him in the head, or...
See, one thing we find in part of the CAP, the people that go through the site, but their trash in the open top boxes instead of the compact, we're hauling things, and they...
Not bad.
And another use is like if someone, like right here, we had a pile of trash that somehow got out of the box, the operator can see that and designate truck to, hey, why don't you go here and clean this up before you go to this box, because it's overflowing or whatnot, if you can see the zoom qualities and clarity of it. And it does have night vision capabilities, unfortunately, it's, we need to maybe put another light or two, because if you turn the infrared on, the lights from the, like the tail light, the glare blocks the license plate, but if we could turn infrared off and have it lit up more, we could just use the regular white light, and it would still show the plate. But here's, I do have a...
Give you an idea of what it looks like tonight.
We think this camera works, so...
That's when infrared turned on, that was at 11:30 at night, and this is when the infrared turned off, and as you can see, if we had more light, we'd be able to see it better.
See it better. Yeah. And that camera only tells us what about, twelve hundred bucks, or...
It was somewhere in that range. Nine hundred, nine hundred to a thousand, I think. We tried some cameras before that were less expensive, but, you know, they're saying, you get what you pay for, when you zoomed in, the license plate was blurry. I mean, that would be great if we could mount right there at it, but they're mainly designed for buildings and alleys, this has the capability to zoom in. And not only can it do that, but we can keep an eye on our communication towers, because it is PTZ, and as you can see, we can zoom and check the site and see if there's anything going on with the site. There's our HUD, where all our radio equipment is. Here's, you can see the tower here. So it's a very, very powerful system. But we plan on putting one of these at every site that has a communications tower, and I'm also working on how to get the signal to the sites that do not have a communication towers. And at these sites, we also install Wi-Fi, so a deputy, instead of driving to Chatham to do a report, he can pull in, park anywhere in this area, pull up his entire computer and laptop, get the Wi-Fi connection, do a report, and get back out on the beach instead of having to drive all the way to Chatham to do a report. You know how large this county is, and if they had to come from Rena or somewhere to do a report and go back, it's most of a shift, just driving to and from Chatham.
What do you see when Rena happens?
Yeah, this site will actually modify that somewhat, so a third box could be put there on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So we hope that'll, you know, solve some of the overflow problems.
Yeah, I took a couple pictures. I came in Monday morning and I went and showed Mr. Hicks, because like, I don't, there was people cleaning, I didn't realize they were workers who worked there. I mean, they were working hard because it was trash all over the road, all behind it. It was, I just couldn't believe that people would just, like they didn't even look, they just threw it and missed the box by 10 feet and all over the road. This was, another thing about this was team effort. Building and Grounds actually installed it on the tower. We just put it up ladder height, so we didn't have to pay anyone to climb the tower. And Daniel Kendrick with Public Safety was a big help in setting everything up, so it's a good team effort also.
Any questions, Mr. Blackstock? Say, that's something, you know, I've visited the sites, and fortunately, for just about every site, I've had the opportunity to meet the person that's taken care of. And you know, it's amazing the work they do and the job they do. I always take time to introduce myself and thank them for their service, because that's not an easy job. I know they're one on 41. It seems like I go by there, and then 10 minutes later, I come back by and it's just flooding out. They do a good job, especially at Christmas. Don't bring it up. I think all of them like that at Christmas.
When the increased late traffic, our 626 site has really been hit hard the last 30 days.
Notice a big difference during season? We did. Hey, any other questions? Mr. Sides, any other?
The only thing I wanted to point out, I meant to add from here, is that there will be a public hearing for adjustments to the 2019 budget. I have received documentation from the school boards, they're asking for quite a bit of a carryover that will exceed the amount that we need in order to have a public hearing. So when you see that, just know that that's what's coming.
August.
It's the clean.
Okay, it's live.
And we can't record Intertate station.
They won't rain it, that's why.
Question with that.
Yeah.
The carryover money from the schools, we gave the schools in the new budget a substantial amount of money additionally.
Yes.
If that money's not allocated for the conferences, we need to have a discussion with them, we've got some of that coming back into the joint fund.
You can, they have earmarked all of their money, a lot, most of that money, if you will remember, they had quite a bit in textbooks. So the majority of the 358 that they're asking to get back is from those textbooks. And the reason they haven't purchased them ever yet, it wasn't until the spring that they got clear guidance from the state as to what books to purchase. So that's what has taken them so long. But even the first couple of weeks in July, they sent about half a million to a million dollars of that money on textbooks.
They set aside money each year?
Four textbooks.
Four textbooks.
They do, but see, in order to buy that volume of textbooks that they need, they need a tremendous amount of money. So that's why it's taken them five years to get the amount they need to just replace all the history books.
So you don't think it's worth the sacrifice?
But you all will get a list of where those monies are going back to, just so you know, so if you have questions, certainly, you know, we can invite them to come and entertain your question.
Well, I don't want to create a hardship for the school system, but also know that we gave them additional, we're giving half dollars in the budget. If it's any monies that can be saved, we've got EMS issues, we've got employee health care, health care insurance issues, and some other financial burdens that we didn't plan for.
But did they not, they built in an anticipated increase for health insurance in their budget?
They did not last year, and so the way they're paying for their health insurance is part of that carryover. They, that's savings to roll over. So they are upping their contribution as well, but their people are going to have to pay a considerable amount.
Because theirs is the same 12.1%.
They may do, they may come up with a plan different than what we do for our employees.
They do. Theirs is different, because they're still on the standard flat dollar amount, and it's subscriber only.
They do not pay 100%.
Right. And what now, none of us pay, everybody has to pay something, but for years, our subscriber only for the thousand dollar plan was free to our employees, which most people own. The schools never had that mentality, they thought insurance should be paid by both parties, so even if it was just a couple of dollars. And now that's increased tremendously, but they have so many more employees on the plan.
I think that thousand dollar plan last year, trying to remember if it's not what it used to be, I think they paid maybe $50 or $53 a pay period.
That sounds like it.
For theirs.
Now, they pay theirs-
I was wondering if it was like that.
No, our thousand dollar plan right now is $15 a pay period, so $30 a month as opposed to $53.
They have one pay period, the other one is much longer.
So they're full-time teachers. And they also pay in 10 months while we pay in 12. So the deductions come out of their checks in 10 months, so in the summer, they don't have a deduction from the insurance.
So they don't give a check?
Well, they can opt either they would be able to-
Anything we've been with meeting discussions, Mr. Sides?
Not where I'm.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, we enter a closed session to discuss a consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose, or a disposition of public real property for destruction in an open meeting, and a special technical bargaining position, negotiation strategy of the public body. One, legal authority, Virginia Code 2.2, that's 371183, subject matter of Pennsylvania County Library, purpose discussion of potential purchase of real estate, of grant expansion, big discussion concerning prospective bids, so industry or existing bids, so industry or no clear announcement, have been made, other bids or industries interested in locating or expanding facilities in the community. Legal authority, Virginia Code 2.2, that's 371185, subject matter of Project Commonwealth, purpose economic development update. Two, legal authority, Virginia Code 2.2, that's 371185, subject matter of Project Commonwealth, purpose economic development update. Three, legal authority, Virginia Code 2.2, that's 371185, subject matter of Project Kelsey, purchase economic development update. C, consultation with legal counsel, for retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, public division, legal advice by such counsel, whether this law should be approved, or be reviewed, because an attorney representing a public body is in the presence was consulted on this matter. One, legal authority, Virginia Code 2.2, that's 371188, Project Philadelphia, purpose consultation with the legal counsel, brought in negotiation of potential contract or intention outside firm for economic development assistance of purpose.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock. Mr. Barber?
My name is Eze.
Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scare?